The allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next is approval of our consent agenda items. A member of the board may request any item to be removed from the consent resolution and deferred for a specific action and/or discussion. No vote of the board is required to remove an item from the consent agenda. If a single member requests, shall possibly be relocated as an action item eligible for discussion. Any item on the consent agenda may be removed and discussed as a non-action item and will be deferred for further study and discussion in subsequent form if the senior agenda or any board member thinks the item requires further action. It is recommended that the following consent agenda items be approved. That's tonight's agenda. The August 13th regular session minutes, August 27th, special session minutes, August 27th, executive session minutes, September 3rd executive session minutes, and payroll claims for August 16th, August 30th, and the accounts payable. And we're going to pull out the personnel report and the approval of the overnight field trip. Motion to approve the consent agenda items. So, there's a motion in a second to approve the consent agenda items. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Thank you. The personnel report is, no certified staff, the termination of Ashley Hensley, instructional assistant at Tipton Elementary School, and the recommendation of Matt Gall, corporation bus driver, Sharon Pearson, instructional assistant at Tipton Elementary School, April Gillum, instructional assistant at Tipton Elementary School, Brenda Hartley, cafeteria employee at the high school, and ECA staff, Lauren Crownover, JV volleyball coach at Tipton High School, Colleen Moore, volleyball volunteer at Tipton High School, Trent Welbourn, assistant football coach at the Tipton Middle School, and the resignation of Travis Scott, varsity head baseball coach at Tipton High School, and Drew Frawley, JV varsity coach at Tipton High School. Motion to approve. Personnel report. Motion in a second. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Thank you. The next item is the overnight field trip, which is FFA SOAR camp, which is October 11th through the 13th, and again on October the 18th through the 20th. We'll trip out, right? Motion to approve the overnight field trip.
Second.
Motion in a second. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
And then next up is the superintendent's report.
First item is spotlight on schools. In this month, we're inviting the Tipton Middle School to share something kind of good and outstanding and it'll go along the school. So I call on Mr. Kinko to make your introductions.
Aye. We are, hi, there he is. We have a mentoring program at the middle school that has been going on for a number of years, and we're so thankful that they come in. We've asked if Ken Aiman would come in and just speak with you about what that entails and how that kind of helps our sixth graders make that adjustment from the elementary to the middle school.
Good evening. Thank you for wanting to share for just a minute. My name is Ken Aiman, and I brought, my guys might want to turn around. Real quick background, and I'll make this really, really short. About five years ago, Mr. Wesel asked us if we could come up with some ideas to maybe help some sixth grade boys transition into the middle school. And at the time, our youth pastor had this idea that we'd get some guys together and we'd come in and sit with sixth graders and talk to them and try to mentor them the best that we could. Very quickly, after about the second meeting, we discovered that sixth graders did not want to talk to people my age. That didn't go over so well. And on the way out the doors, someone just mentioned that it would be great if we could get some high school kids to come and help us. So I walked right down and talked to Mr. Rushton. I said, you know, if you could give me about 10 high school boys that you think would be good mentors, someone for sixth graders to look up to, that would be great. He was all over it. The next day, he sent me a list of boys and he was, we were ready to go. So from the very first time that we had the boys come in, you could tell the difference in the sixth grade boys, their attitude, their willingness to talk, their willingness to share. They recognized those high school boys from sporting events and those types of things. So we've been doing this about our fifth year. We've grown considerably. We started with the boys, and all of a sudden it dawned on us, okay, we separated the boys. We've already got the girls separated, so why don't we do the girls too? So my daughter, Aliya Long, leads the girls, and I kind of lead the boys. These are three seniors this year that volunteered to come and just share very, very quickly with you what they gained from what we're doing and what they think the sixth graders are getting from it.
So I'm Emma Long. I'm a senior, and this is my second year with the program. And this year, I have about five girls in my group, and I think this is a really good number, just to be able to talk to them and have them share things with us as well. And I think it really impacts them just to be able to not only share things with us about their week, but for us also to share things with them. And it's fun to see them outside of school, not only at school, just seeing them outside and getting to have our own relationship with them.
Okay, so my name is Beth Hammerkows. I'm a senior too. This is my second year. For the middle school side, I know that someone like me who plays basketball, plays baseball, and interacts with council, stuff like that, when I show up, I get all eyes and ears. And so for me to be able to talk and kind of share, because I know a lot about what middle school is like, I mean, I just get to use my influence as a person to better them, or it works both ways where I see kids all the time on the street and like, I can respond to them with their first name, and I can ask them all the time, how you doing? I had a kid last year that was kind of struggling with the remodel. Parents were struggling, and so it was really busy, and I would see him all the time, just because I would mow his neighbor's yard and I could check up on him. Hey buddy, how you doing?
I'm Dalton. I'm also a senior. It's my second year. Being with the kids is great. I love it. Get to talk to them. Some of them are skeptical about middle school still. Ask a lot if they're excited next year and upcoming high school. Some of them are iffy because they say, some of them say they're not ready for it because they don't play sports. When kids say it's not popular, they don't play sports. But I told them they have esports gaming club, stuff like that. His eyes lit up. It was just really cool to see.
So the handout that we gave you, just as a real quick snapshot of what we do, we meet once a month on the first Thursday of every month. We feed them. We bring pizza in for the sixth graders. The boys enjoy that probably more than the girls do. We just had our first meeting, and in our first meeting of every year, we're reminded again, what, I'll say this, anybody got six, sixth graders are...
Special.
A special group of people. Thank you. They are a special group of people, and so it takes a little while for them to learn to settle down and, but these guys that come down do a tremendous job. But we bring them lunch, and we spend about 10 or 15 minutes eating lunch, and then we start talking about different character traits. Every month, we have a different one. I shared some of those on here. You know, we talk about goal setting and integrity, gratitude, relationships, leadership, teamwork, confidence, humility. And we'll provide questions for the mentors to then just share with the sixth graders, and they will leave the talk at the table. But then the neat thing, a couple of years ago we started, is these guys have volunteered then for the last 10 or 15 minutes of every meeting to get up in front of the sixth graders and speak themselves on whatever the topic of the day is. Here again, they will listen when one of these guys gets up and talks. They kind of tune me out when I do, so I'm just kind of the pizza guy. But that's okay. That's okay. You know, it continues to grow every year. We continue to learn every year. We love what we're doing. I would love to continue to expand the program because I think I see over the course of the year, the difference in the sixth graders, especially, I'm with the guys, so especially with some of the boys, they really enjoy talking to the senior boys, and I really appreciate the time. The only thing we require, you know, require nothing from the school, just 45 minutes during the sixth grade lunch hour, once a month. I would love it if we could figure out a way to have a bigger space so that we could always have a one to five ratio, like this year with the girls. When we started, it was one to 10. It's hard to have those discussions with 10. If we could figure out a way to have a one to five ratio is what I'm working on, because I'm sure Mr. Stillson could find me five more guys and five more girls to help me do that. So thank you for the school allowing us to do that. We're loving it, and we hope to continue to do it. Any questions? Yes. It's all sixth graders, all boys and all girls.
Are all of the boys included in this, or they volunteered for this?
No, all the boys. It's mandatory that all the boys come.
It's mandatory, we're all.
It was.
Better look.
Yes. It's mandatory that all the boys. Now, I will say, so far it appears this year's group of sixth graders isn't quite as rowdy as last year's. And I, please don't take offense to that, but people know that if each class that comes through, it's different dynamics. So, I'll be there some right there.
So where do you currently meet? Out in the library?
Well, the, last year, the boys met in the library, the girls met in the cafeteria. But because the numbers flip flop this year, we have more boys than we do girls. The boys are meeting in the cafeteria, and the girls then meet in the library. It works out well.
Thank you for being a blessing.
Thank you.
Appreciate Mr. Aiman and his group, and also our students who come down and, and our free graders. Next item, we've got the department reports, Mr. Wesel, facilities transportation, food services, Mr. Clark, food services, Mr. Frawl, and technology, Mr. Venderich. So we have those reports for you, that have taken place in the last month. Also have a financial report for August. Give you a summary of the monthly revenue versus expenditures. And for August, the expenditure exceeded the revenue by $231,000, mainly because we had the third payroll that month in August. So that gives us cash balance just under $750,000 in the education fund. The other funds listed in the middle of the page include debt service, cash balance of $1.24 million, operation fund, cash balance of $2.8 million, because we really haven't spent anything down to that since we got our June draw. Here today, interest at First Farmers is over $127,000, and the projection chart shows we should end the year with cash balance in education fund of almost $600,000. And just other news, we've received preliminary notice that we've been awarded $58,000 in Indiana Department Homeland Security grant, the security school safety grant. This will help fund the SRO position for the coming year. We've asked a question about that. We're inquiring about, through Department Homeland Security, as far as the amount and some of the other projects we had to apply for. The official ADM count will be taken this Friday on September 13th. Based on the enrollment numbers of last Friday, we are at 1,489 students. We had projected 1,490 students, and given reports that was done a couple of years, had forecasted 1,480 students. So we're down to 43 students from where we were last year at this time. We are still working to make contact with many of those families left at Tipton for various reasons, moved out of the area, been placed out of different homes, custody issues, and those types of things. So we've got people working on that, trying to make, make contact with many people we can't, can't do during the day, but we're making those attempts. We also hosted our first first responder Friday last week, got a lot of positive responses from that. We had a number of first responders come in, especially the elementary and middle school, and we had a deputy at the high school meeting with those kids. And something we started this year, that will take place on the first Friday of each month during the school year. So if the kids really enjoy seeing these people come in and interact with them during lunchtime, first responders came in, they had lunch at one session, but most of them stuck around for all the lunch sessions just so they can eat and they can talk with the kids. So they enjoyed it as much as the kids did, I think. We've met various school groups that took part in this past weekend, Teton County Pork Festival. There are a number of student groups up there volunteering their time to help with the community activities, and they get great credit to the youth of this county that they step up and provide different services, pork festival, but at other times of year throughout our community. And as you have been reading about, we did receive the I-Learn scores last week, which are the results of last spring's I-Learn state assessment. It's been noted, you've seen in the press releases and things, various media outlets, the scores are down considerably from last year, and really not possible to compare scores this year with last year. They're two totally different tests. And so the results are a lot different than they were with I-Step. And so right now, the schools are in the initial stages of analyzing the scores and incorporating some of those things that enter their school improvement plans. You look at the area scores, it was published in the Oklahoma Tribune, and Mr. Rell likes to brag that while scores are not as high as what we saw with I-Step, we, the only thing we can compare with, how are we doing with state average, how are we doing with area schools, and the elementary and state in most areas, compared with those schools in our area, they had some of the highest percentage passing. Middle school did okay, but we've got some work to do there, but they've already started doing some interventions to turn that around. And I know just to get those goals, to get those scores turned around, middle school, our staff is really working hard this year to make that happen. So hopefully we'll see, the college results is coming spring. So those are things that are taking place, going on in the school right now.
All right. Next up is old business, consideration to approve various policies on second reading. Another board policies have been submitted for revisions that were considered last month on first reading, and these are based on new state law. Others are to refine or clarify policies and procedures. It is recommended board approve the policies changes as presented on second reading. And you guys had a copy of those last month, and then this month, entertain a motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion in a second to approve the policies on second reading. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Next up is new business, consideration to approve the 2020 budget, the CPF plan for 2020 through 2022, and the bus replacement plan for 2020 through 2024 were presented to the board last month, where permission to advertise these items was given. The budget and the CPF plan, and the bus replacement plan were advertised in the local paper along with the announcement of a public hearing to be held to receive public comments and input. Public hearing was held on August 27th, with limited comments being received. Having completed those legal requirements, the 2020 budget, the CPF plan for 2020, 2022, the bus replacement plan for 2020 through 2024 is now presented for approval. Recommend, recommendation to approve the budget. Have a motion?
So move.
Second. Motion in a second to approve the 2020 budget. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any vote?
No.
All right, next up is consideration to approve the capital projects plan, CPF for 2020, 2022. It is recommended board approve the capital project plan, CPF plan for 2020 through 2022.
So move.
Second. Have a motion in a second to approve the capital projects plan. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any vote? Next, consideration to approve the bus replacement plan, 2020 through 2024. It is recommended that the board approve the budget, bus replacement plan, 2020 through 2024. Motion to approve.
So move.
Second. Have a motion in a second to approve the bus replacement plan. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any vote?
No.
Next is consideration to approve a resolution to transfer amounts from the education fund to the operations fund. This resolution authorizes the trailer of Tipton Community School Corporation to transfer the amount of $115,578 each month, which is 14%, from the education fund to the operations fund, to reimburse the operations fund for expenses that are not allocated to student instruction and learning under Indiana Code 20-42.5, for a period of one year, hence from January 2020 through December 2020. It is recommended board approve the resolution to make monthly transfers during 2020 from the education fund to the operations fund. Any motion?
Question. So if we approve this tonight, three months from now, or six months from now, we feel like we need to change course? We could just bring it to the...
Yeah, just like we did during 2019. So during the course of the 2020 school year, we'll continue to monitor that, make adjustments that we feel like might be necessary.
Gotcha.
Uh, yeah, this will, this will happen each month now, with passing of this resolution. And it won't be reported how it looks like, and we feel like when you make the adjustments, we'll bring that recommendation to you.
Motion to approve the transfer amounts from the education fund to the operations fund. Second. Motion in a second to approve the transfer. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any vote? Next is consideration to approve the resolution to authorize reductions. Corporations' budget appropriation and revenues must balance, and it is possible that all of the 2019 budget appropriations will be expended. Resolution, this resolution authorizes the superintendent to reduce appropriations from the 2019 budget in any or all funds as necessary to help achieve a balanced budget for 2020. If this balance cannot be fully achieved by reducing the 2019 appropriations, then the superintendent is further authorized to reduce those 2020 appropriations in any or all funds to appropriate as appropriate and necessary to achieve a balanced budget for 2019. Motion to approve that resolution.
So move.
Second.
Second.
Motion in a second to approve the resolution to authorize those reductions. All in favor, say aye? Any vote? Next is consideration to approve the budget goals for 2020. Budget goals for 2020 were presented to the board last month. We can't beat them on page six of the budget overview, and you guys have had a chance to flip that over. Entertain a motion to approve those budget goals for 2020.
So move.
Second. Motion in a second. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any vote? Next is consideration to approve the use of savings from teacher retirement fund reductions. New in 2019, HEA 1001 requires the governing body of each school corporation after July 1, 2019, and before October 1, 2019, to hold public meetings to determine, one, the dollar amount of reduction in the school corporation's employer contribution rate, and two, the actions of the governing body of this school corporation intends to take with that amount. Based on the teachers employed during the 2019-2020 school year, we estimate a savings of $77,040 is recommended that this saving be applied toward teacher salaries. Motion to approve that.
So move.
Motion in a second. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any vote? Right, next up is consideration to approve up to four e-learning days for 2019-2020 school year. Community school corporation is again asking the school board to approve up to four days that may be used as e-learning days in case of inclement weather during 2019-2020 school year. This would be in addition to those e-learning days previously approved for professional development. While such days were approved last year, four days were used last year. The implementation plan that's attached, and you guys have had that in your packets, you are looking over, entertain a motion to consider approving the four e-learning days.
Quick question, comment. So last year, we had the four official days, and we approved four additional days.
Right, we used four e-learning days for professional development, and then we used four for income development.
So we did use a total of...
Correct.
Officially, we're already on the four dates that have been established. This would add four, the weather...
And we need a four, right. And if we use those four, the weather's still bad, can we come back to you and get permission to use additional days if needed?
So if we have...
And we had two makeup days too, by the way. We used a present day, and then we added one at the end of the year. Total six missed.
If we have a week of snow days, we can use the first two as e-learning days, is that correct? And then the rest of the week would be makeup at the end of the year?
Right.
Motion to approve the e-learning days. Second. Motion in a second to approve the e-learning days. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any vote? All right, next is other matters coming forward, and we all received and mailed over the weekend, and we need to consider, to accept the remediation of rich balances, school board.
So move.
Motion in a second. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Next is consideration to approve advertising and taking steps to fill that vacancy on the school board. So any motion to...
Yeah, and this department, I was talking before the meeting, if you're looking at, tomorrow, send a notice to the paper announcing the vacancy. And anybody interested in this Madison Township, they can submit a letter of interest that will be due September 18th, and we'll call for an executive session on September 19th so that you as a board can discuss how we're going to fill that vacancy. So we'll get the notes out, we'll get those people who may be interested in taking that seat, and then the board come together, let it candidate, and make some decisions, or at least do some consideration, how they want to proceed.
So just some discussion on this. So they must live in Madison Township?
Correct.
And they need to submit a letter of interest to you?
To this office, yes.
Okay. By September 18th?
September 18th.
Just a letter of interest, there's no survey or anything?
Right.
And then what will we do after that?
Well, that will come to the board on the 19th and talk about that.
Okay.
And sit down to what we've done before, and we had other vacancy, and if that's how you'd like to proceed, that's fine. For certain steps, we can do those as well.
Go get the questionnaire, like I got after the letters were sent.
Correct.
I believe the only other requirement is the after-registered...
Registered owner.
And come to the motion to approve the advertising and those steps to fill that vacancy.
So move.
Motion in a second. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any vote? All right, next up is advisory committees. We have a personnel advisory committee, we can get away with the 16th thing.
Right, we may not be with that since we're in negotiations, so.
October the 14th, Business Affairs Advisory Committee, and November the 18th, Facilities and Technology Advisory Committee. And other things to come up is, Kevin mentioned the ADM count date is this Friday, and the first e-learning day is next Monday, and the Tipton County Career Fair is September 17th, and ECD is, what is this, off? All right. Is coming up on September 27th through 29th. And on the 30th of this month, and October 1st, some of us are going to be going to ISBA State, All-State Fountain. And the next school we're meeting is October 18th. Next up is a comment from the community, and we have three minutes of each and 30 minutes total, and Mr. Aiman's list is ready to go.
Chris Hussey.
Chris Hussey.
That's me. So I arrived a little late. My wife signed me up in case I wanted to ask any questions when I could call me up. And I don't.
Oh, okay. Sorry, I was not prepared for that. Okay, the last board meeting, I had asked about, or made a comment about all the families who had left the school district. And so I want to kind of follow up on that. We've always asked about what do you do when these families leave? Do you make contact with them? And if so, can you please explain to us what that entails? Who makes the phone call? Do you ask them a bunch of questions? Are they just making a comment? I mean, what is it that you expect the person who makes that call from the school district to that family? Does anybody know what that process is in detail?
We have a person come into this office making some of those calls. Many principals and secretaries got that information as they made contact with families as they, as they left. Those that were not contacted, we've had somebody trying to make phone calls, somebody difficult in the afternoon, and just, you know, decided to leave, might share why you have to get to schools and just push them off. So they've taken note of that, so.
Okay.
Go get summarized and share that for later on.
Okay. Yeah, what do you do with that information?
I'm sorry?
Just you share it with the board, and then what do you do with that information?
Well, then we'll take a look at there are things we can do to prevent that. I mean, you have this migration all the time, all school corporations, kids coming in and out for various reasons. So some we can control, some we can't. So and we talk to our administrators on how we can control some of that, what we can do to try to keep some families here.
Okay. Thank you.
Susan Sloan.
No comment.
Mitchell Sloan.
Ready, go. Thank you.
Laura Springer.
My initial question was answered, but I do have another one. We talked about 2020 budget. Will you guys come out with a list of goals in 2020? How, do you put those out there at your regular board meeting? Or, you know, when I think about 2020 school year, I'm thinking like, do you have a list of the top 10 goals you want to accomplish for the year? Or how is that laid out? Other than, aside from the budget goals, but I'm thinking more of student retention, things you're going to do at the school, whether it's marketing or whatnot. Do we have a list of those that are out there and made public?
There, and perhaps more right now, it's something the administrators worked on this summer. What we had the data collected last year through the community input, through the event ed review surveys that have been done. And so they worked on graphing that, and we're trying to get that together to get that out to the board here in very near future.
And then does that go beyond the board? Or is that?
Right. I mean, it'll be a vetting process to get out to the board, get further input, those type of stuff, so, yes.
But each building, we have a principle to a building plan that's will be incorporated.
So soon. To kind of, to piggyback on what Mindy was saying, I talked to a couple of parents that had other kids. I think we get caught up in thinking that everything's going to be negative, and necessarily, it isn't always necessarily negative, but I think that we really need to give some consideration on these exit surveys. Who's doing them? I think it needs to be at least somebody at administrative level, and two, what the survey consists of, so that we can actually highlight some of the things we are doing well. Because I mean, the assumption is everything goes negative, it's not always negative. But we need to be able to recognize what we're doing right, so we can grow those areas as well as where we have a deficit. The other thing that I had, or I heard mentioned was the $77,000 in the fund savings, what are we, are we going to, I know it's going into the negotiation, but I would hope that it's greatly considered. From the previous budget meeting, and I think the governor's been pretty clear, this extra $600,000 we're getting from the state should be going towards salaries. So I hope that's considered when we go into negotiations, as well as the 77.
Thank you. Tammy Carson.
I'm here tonight because man problems must be told. My daughter's for kickoff, I went through every chain of command, and I still don't think it's right what he did of kicking the girls off because of the drama. They've done their heart and soul for football, and they were supposed to have a meeting with my two girls, and the one girl that was causing the drama, and it never happened. And also in the handbook, he did not comply the way you're supposed to on the meetings. And I did try to talk to him, but he slammed the door in my face the day I was trying to talk to him. And I just don't think it's fair of how it was handled and the situation.
Take that under advisement. Thank you. Violet Carson.
Like my mom said, it's been going on about a year. I told Toll multiple times about the whole situation, her calling my mom the B word, her telling me if you go F off and all this. And with the drama, we've been, I've been making it to her most five years now, if I counted this year. I've been putting my heart and soul, even in our meeting with Sanders, he said that I could do anything for him and be there right on the spot when he gets something. And football is my life. Like every time I see a jersey on, I'm ready for game day. I love to hear the crowd. I love to hear the crowd cheer and everything. I'm ready on the field every time. And during our football practices, we have certain jobs, and they're always on their phone, laying down, flirting with all the boys. And that's it.
Thank you. Laura Satong.
I just got a couple of quick questions, I swear. Is first, you know, I received a letter like you guys did about the situation with Rick Pelt. So I want to say thank you for following the policy to do that. I've just had a lot of parents, you know, with the petition and things, ask me, would it have been followed? There's such a trust issue in this community. Would it have been followed had the letter had not been sent? So to your point, Mr. Emsweller, about capturing the people and why they're leaving, again, I kind of left the last meeting kind of numb, because I've been out there. I've been on front porches, I've been in kitchens, I've talked to people about issues that have been raised. And no one's reached out to me to gather that information, which can speak to the issues as to why, at least 12, I know, people did not enroll in school this year. So I recognize it's a public forum, but I can't think of a more important issue to talk about than something that affects the public. So I am asking the board, I can do it in a separate private meeting, so it's not put out there, but I really feel that there needs to be a venue in which these parents' voices can be heard. When you talk to a brother who recently went through a horrible bullying experience, and he signs a petition because of concerns about leadership, and he signs it merely so that he has a say, so it doesn't happen to his younger brother, these are a lot of the stories we're hearing. You would be so surprised to the reasons why there is such, for lack of a better word, lack of trust. So I recognize I can't talk about it in public, but I'm putting the information, I'm putting the invitation out to the board to meet with you privately, because parents' voices need to be heard.
She will.
Kim Satong.
Yes.
Cam Ward.
I must be last.
You are.
I'm, so I sign as number one. So I've been teaching at Tipton High School for 22 years, and I've seen a lot over the years. And I probably feel like I should have said this at the public forum that we had on the finances for this year, but I'm going to say it tonight. I have nothing against the board, I'm not here as a hater. I've had professional relationships with all of you, and I appreciate that. Financially, I am a saver. I buy my groceries at Aldi's. It's a German store, too, but. And I buy my clothing the best I can, so I understand the need for healthy budgets. And there's definitely a part of me who appreciates our healthy budget in our school corporation. But I do also know that teachers want to be appreciated, and salaries are one way of showing that. And we, you know what other corporations are paying, so it's disappointing that we haven't kept up, and I guess for lack of a better word. So, but we're doing some great things at Tipton. So Mrs. Hendricks helped paint the blacktop, lots of teachers did for recess. We have the STEM lab in the elementary school with the help from the Tipton County Foundation. We're hoping to become STEM accredited. Mrs. Fernand wrote a grant and got the success center at Tipton High School. Mr. Robertson has the VR lab through a grant. Our math and English teachers helped redo the math lounge this summer. The full staff lounge and high school staff lounge were both renovated last year. And those are things we're very proud of in our community. On a side note, though, on teacher lounges, those were redone at a time that we did a renovation of our restrooms, which were very much needed. But then we tacked on some locker rooms, so the teachers' lounges had to be redone by staff members going out to the community to get donations and doing all the labor. And I'm sure the middle school was a similar situation, but at high school, four teachers spent evenings and weekends for several weeks completing the task. And now there's something very much we can be proud of. I walked in today, it still smells new, you can smell the paint, I'm like, oh, this is fun. I had lunch with a teacher who once a week says, isn't this nice? And it really is, it's very much appreciated. But our salary scale for the Indy Star article that people have referred to was the ninth lowest in the state, tied for ninth for 1718. So I took the schools that were lower than us, and a few of them that were higher than us, and looked at each salary contract for 1819, and I looked at the corporation letter grade, and our B is pretty stellar for that far down. When I redid the salaries?
Thirty seconds.
It's three minutes?
Thirty seconds.
Okay. We fell to sixth lowest in the state, and we aren't sixth lowest in anything, or ISTEAP scores, or ILEARN scores, graduation rate, school letter grade, number of students participating in extracurriculars, bands, choirs. We don't get sixth last in anything. Three minutes?
So I just want to piggyback on, I think you've heard that teachers are important to us. Please take this to heart and pay these teachers. You have a great school, they're outperforming the state ISTEAP test, take care of them. We don't want those.
Okay.
Tom Dazel.
I'd just like to take a moment to say thank you to the board for the business relationship I'm with First Farmers Banking Trust. So thank you for that. Thanks for all your hard work. Thank you for your openness to suggestion and comment. I feel like I should contact any and all of you at any time, as far as suggestions and things like that. Our youngest graduated this last year, so I would say thank you for the great education and start that you gave our kids at this time. And I would just like to say if things go the way I'd like in November, I commit to an even closer working relationship with the city and the school board. Thank you.
Who wants to?
An old question, that has the PSS group that hires your subs found a local recruiter yet?
Yeah, I'll switch that, I couldn't tell you. I, they're still working on that, apparently. We have a regional recruiter that's kind of working and adding to the number of subs we have, yes, so the number seems to be going up.
Did Mr. Powell give a reason for his resignation?
Nothing specific, no.
I understand that the, our school board policy is different than the state policy on residents' requirements for school board members. Does one trump the other? Does state trump the local, or does local?
We may advise the state law with Trump's local policy.
State law trumps?
Right. So we will be taking a look at that and making revisions to that, take their policy, make sure it conforms to state law.
Okay, thank you.
That's all we got?
All right. That's all we got. And I want to entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion in a second to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Because people don't believe wrong.